All the meetings of the county independent school district board of trustees in special session. On Monday, May 4th, 2020, a telephonic and our video conferences in accordance with suspension of certain provisions of Texas Open Meeting Act is authorized by the Governor of Texas and the state's attorney general at 12 noon. Board members present are Mr. Jack Bailey, Mr. Kenny Fernandez, Vicki Morgan, whoop, Mr. Fred Roberts, Nelda Sullivan, Maricel Ciano, and myself, Marshall Kendrick. And we're still waiting for Vicki to get on. Let the record indicate that a court of board members is present. Being duly called and that notice of this meeting was placed and was posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meeting Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. I'm going to ask Mr. Bailey to give the invocation and Ms. Ciano to do the pledges.
Bow for a word of prayer, please. Holy Father, we just thank you for this day. We thank you for the beautiful weather. Lord, we pray for our nation this morning. We pray that we would be united in this and that in this, these crazy times. Lord, we thank you for our school district. We thank you for the employees of the district and the families. And Lord, we just thank you for all the great things that are going on in the education of our kids. We pray for those who are the, the frontline responders. We just pray for them this morning that you guide and direct and protect them in their duties. We pray for the recent loss of the policeman here in our, in our media area. We pray that you'd be with those families and pray for the one fighting for his life in the helicopter crash this weekend. Well, we just, uh, thank you again for your many blessings. Thanks for your love, all us we have in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. Hi Vicki.
Hello. I was trying to get on in my other computer and it wouldn't work, so.
Okay, Maricel. Can't hear you.
The United States of America.
Of America.
And to the Republic.
We stand one nation.
Liberty and justice for all.
And to the Texas flag.
For the Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to the Texas. One state.
Under God.
One and indivisible.
We're on adjournment to close session presented Texas Government Code, Section 551.074. The first considering the appointment, employment evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline or dismissal of a public officer, employer to hear complaints or charges against a public officer or employee concerning matters related to the superintendent's recommendations to hire administrative personnel and are the superintendent's recommendations related to renewals, non-renewals, and terminations of contracts for professional personnel. 551.071 to consult with the district's attorneys concerning matters on which the attorney due to the district under the code of professional responsibility, clear conflicts with the Texas Open Meeting Act, seek the advice of its attorneys about pending or contesting litigation or settlement offer, or to consider legal advice regarding items specifically listed on the agenda. 551.072 for the purpose of discussing the purchase, exchange, lease, value of real property. 551.071 and 551.074 for the purpose of consulting with the district's attorneys concerning and considering matters related to the superintendent's recommendation to turn rate to 2019, 2020 probationary contract of Sonia Kareshi and related actions. We'll reconvene at seven, when we finish here. We're going to reconvene at 12:40 PM.
Yes, sir.
Comments? First item is consideration of possible pool of contract renewals for 2020, 2021.
So.
I second.
Motion by Ms. Morgan, second by Ms. Ciano. Any comments or questions?
Yeah, I have a general question. I was, how about all the ones that are on probation, Deanne? I mean, some of it's like 30 and 35%. Is that normal?
Tony, do you want to speak to that as far as the years of probation and if that's typical for our system?
That is typical for our system and a teacher that is brand new to teaching can be on a probationary, uh, uh, contract for three years.
Right.
And so, um, they may have been teaching for us for two years and this will be their third year. We also can put, uh, teachers on probationary contracts, um, for one year if they've taught out of the last five of eight, um, maybe in another school district. And our district of innovation allows us to actually do that for two years. So if they've taught in another school district for the last five of eight years, um, they can be on, uh, two probationary contracts then.
So.
Tony, I have a question.
You through, Jack?
Yeah, that's good.
Okay. Tony has a question.
Since we have one-year contracts, why would we do two- and three-year probationary? Because if they can't get past a one-year probationary, why do we go a second year?
Sometimes we, um, we do have employees that maybe the first year, uh, you know, they may have done fair, not, not to a point where we, we would want to take any sort of action on them, but maybe the second year they, they fall off. And so, um, we would take action on a probationary, uh, contract at that point. But we are, um, allowed by law to give, uh, teachers that have not taught five of the last eight years, three probationary contracts. Um, and of course, you guys know that the threshold for us taking contract action is much lower on a probationary contract versus on a, a term contract. So we want as many years of probationary as we can, so we make sure that the employee is the right fit for our district.
Well, we also have one-year contracts for everybody, so that shouldn't be a, too much of a hurdle.
A term contract is a little bit different. There is a higher threshold and of course, with a term contract, the employee does have the ability to appeal, uh, to the commission for firsts just to the school board.
Sure, I understand. Thank you very much.
Uh huh.
Hold in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose no, motion carries. Consideration of possible action to accept and adopt the superintendent's recommendation to terminate the probationary contract of Sonia Kareshi, deaf education teacher assigned to Malillo Middle School effective at the end of the 2019, 2020 school year and related actions.
I move that we, uh, approve the recommendation to terminate the probationary contract of Sonia Kareshi, deaf ed teacher at Malillo.
Okay. Motion by Ms. Morgan, second by Mr. Roberts. Any comments or questions? Hold in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose no, motion carries. Budget workshop.
So board members, we're going to go over for the first time, uh, the draft budget. We have several different drafts we want to review with you today. I'm going to start by sharing my screen, uh, so that you can see exactly what we're discussing as we work through this. I know you've had an opportunity to review it, uh, but Carla Merka, our CFO, is going to come on and just talk a little bit about the revenue picture. This is a unique year, uh, not just for public education. I know for many businesses, this will be a unique year and COVID will have a long-lasting impact on, uh, this school district as well as, uh, many across our state and across the nation. Uh, so I'm going to turn it over to Carla. She's going to do the best job she can to, uh, give you a projection of the revenue that will build our budget based on. And then I'll come back on and give you more information related to priorities. So Ms. Merka, if you want to take it over, I'll try to scroll through and do my best with the, uh, presentation of the spring.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Powell. So we'll start with the local revenue. So local revenue, we, this year because of House Bill 3, remember last year we lost money on our tax rate again this year on, because of House Bill 3, our tax rate on local collections will drop from a dollar nine to a dollar four. Now, we are expecting a gain of 3% in our tax base. So originally, when I looked at the budget and ran revenue, I had actually projected an increase there. But then with COVID, I had to drop our collection rate down to 95% because we're not positive with all the individuals that's unemployed. Will they be able to pay their taxes? Will they pay their house note? Will businesses pay their taxes on time within that budget? So we dropped our collection rate down to 95% instead of the normal 98%. And that's just to be on the safe side because we're not sure what's going to happen with all the economy and where we stand right now. So that's the reason you're seeing a, a slight decrease in the local revenue. Then we move on to the state revenue. So state revenue, I have a decrease of $11 million. What, the couple of the reasons that we have this decrease is because, one, I'd also dropped the ADA because normally we are running right now at a 48,681. And I dropped it down to 47,800 again because of COVID. How many students are really going to come back when we start the year up? And so with that swing, that was about $6 million loss with just dropping that ADA. And we did that just to be on the safe side because we're not positive what's going to happen when we open school back up. And so we want to be safe and sorry because we don't want to project that it's going to be the same and then they don't come back and we're, have a bigger loss that we have to deal with. And so that's why you're seeing such a large decrease there. Another thing that has a decrease is, yes, we had to show that our tax base has increased. And anytime your tax base goes up, what the state pays goes down. So you're seeing, that's where all those differences are coming from that make up that 11 million. We also have an increase in the RDSPD and that's because as we hire staff, that grant is reimbursable. So that's why you're seeing that increase of 607,000 there. Then we move to the federal revenue. So federal revenue is very different because you see a large decrease in Shar's. The reason that we have such a large decrease, that's because of indirect cost. So six years ago, the district signed a waiver that we would not have to drop our IDC rate. And that's because every district across the state of Texas, when they filled out the form, ours dropped from 19% and it was going to go down to right at 10%. Now it's even dropped down when we did the final calculation. We're going to run it at 9.9% this year. And that's where you're seeing that difference because our indirect cost rate is what drives that Shar's payment that we get back. And so we've estimated that to drop, uh, 3.5 million because of our indirect cost. So overall, you do see a quite a bit of a difference in our revenue from what we had had in the past. And that's mainly because we're trying to be on the safe side until we get through some of this crisis to see what's going to happen. I know that the revenue is projected very low, but I can't tell you who's going to pay their taxes with the economy and the situation that we're in, especially in our area with the oil business. There's a lot of people that's not employed and a lot of businesses that are having to lay people off. And so we, that's why we did the route that we made on our revenue is because we're trying to be on the safe side. I do think this is going to be the worst that it can possibly be. I do expect it to go up. This is something that we have to monitor until we get through at least a couple more months. I do expect to see some changes, but we may not change it until we get past when we open school back up to see what we have when we open school. So this is going to be a very odd budget year, especially on the revenue side because there's so many unknowns with what's going on. That's the revenue summary, so now I'll turn it back over. Does anyone have any questions while we're on revenue for me?
What is, what is, what is the indirect cost, Carla? What is that, what is that?
So indirect cost is what the district gets to charge for different things. So we get it on grants, which is about 3.5%. So for every grant that we have, we get to take this. Shar's we get, uh, this year will be 9.9%. And where that calculation comes from, it's for, like, everyone in the business office, we're all coded to the local revenue. And so we get to charge that percent to make up the difference because this is the time that we spend on those grants. So it's anyone that's charged a local and we get to claim a piece of this back, like payroll. We run their payroll. We do this. And we also get that indirect cost on child nutrition. And that rate will go down as well. And we get that based on, because we pay the trash, we pay the electric bill. And so that's what indirect cost is. It's just a percent that we get to pull back for the district because we are running everything and a lot of people are paid on a local, but yet we're doing a piece of their work. And so it's just a small percent that we get to claim to come back.
So it's just allocation of some overhead that the federal government's going to pay us?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. Well, thank you, Carla, for that. I'm going to just start by saying that, uh, the timeline was that in February before COVID, we were all hard at work on our budgets, working on campus budgets and department budgets, of course. We continued our work with the zero-based budgeting that I've talked to you about, trying to process and analyze the needs. And then COVID came, so by the end of March, we had our department request, our staffing request, uh, request for reclassifications, which you've seen in the past. All of that was entered into a budget. We also, as a placeholder, put a 3% raise in, uh, and we entered all of that to come up with that huge deficit budget. So draft one is everything in the kitchen sink. That's how I like to think of it. Draft one has, you can see a listing of campuses that have either grown or lost enrollment, of course, uh, departments that have made requests, whether those were one-time costs or recurring costs, as well as programmatic needs, a staffing request. And again, I think of that as everything in the kitchen sink. In a perfect world, this is what they believe they need to do the operations of their department or their campus successfully. So that's what's reflected in draft one. Uh, we quickly took that, gave me a little stomach ache, but we took it, started reviewing it, the entire list of requests from the departments and started revising budgets, having those tough conversations. Of course, by going with zero-based budgeting, we were able to identify what should wait, uh, what was a priority for the current year and what perhaps we'd have to look at if funding improved later down the road. So after a long month of reviewing that and doing multiple Zoom meetings, that brings us to draft two, which you have in your packet. And draft two, we have two, uh, versions of draft two. We have draft two with no raise and a placeholder. Um, and of course, that's the first one you have, which gives you a $12 million deficit. And then you have draft two with a 2% raise placeholder. And of course, the difference there is there is a raise included in that one. And of course, uh, you have a deficit of, I believe, 19.9 million dollars. And Carla, you jump in here anytime I'm giving incorrect numbers because I've seen so many of these, but yes, 19.9 for that draft. So again, we're still looking at this, um, as we present this to you, uh, we realize this is only a draft right now and we will be coming back at future budget workshops and having future discussions about this. We heard from Carla, this could change for the better. It could change for the worse. These are unprecedented times. And as much as we've been told, even, um, recently on a phone call with Dan Patrick with area superintendents or statewide superintendent, uh, they don't see changes in this year's funding is what he, his comment was, uh, that does not mean in the new biennium, there won't be severe changes. So we have been told to be very, um, we're, uh, mindful of that fact that that could be coming as we watch the economy. We hope for things to turn around, of course. We hope for Texas to open back up to business when it's safe. Uh, but of course, we know that we have to be conservative in our planning and in our funding projections. And we've done that here, uh, what we've discussed with you today. Just to let you know some priorities for this year. They include, of course, programmatic needs and funding as we continue our early college, high school, or any of our programs that we've talked about, uh, related to our strategic plan. We have some huge special education needs as that population grows. There's mandates tied to that that we need to address. Uh, pre-K full day across the district. We've done a good job in this district, keeping up with that. So it's not a huge transition for us, but that's a legislative requirement that we're full day pre-K across the board. So being in compliance with that. We've added in here employee assistance. And Tony, I believe that was 150,000, uh, that we put here on the budget. And that is a counseling program for employees in need. We have not had that in the past. We feel like there is a need for that. And so we did put that as well as additional counseling, uh, at the elementary. We have put in, in different steps in previous budgets, full-time counselors at the elementary where we take that parent coordinator piece off the elementary counselor and we hire a parent professional, uh, to help us with that part, uh, giving them full-time counseling responsibilities. We know that's a positive movement, uh, helping kids with mental health and social emotional needs in our district is, is important at every level. Uh, so we have asked for continued, uh, support of that as well as safety measures. So a later agenda item is going to come today to bring a recommendation for a position related to another legislative requirement, which is reading academies. So you're going to hear from Dr. Hickman in just a few minutes about those options and why we chose the option we chose, how it will save the district money. Uh, but we'll wait on that till we get to the agenda item. But again, this is just a budget workshop, giving you a first glance at what we've been working on, uh, giving you an opportunity to either ask questions now or come back with questions, kind of let it marinate, um, so that you can have time to give us feedback and guidance as we go forward. Um, any teacher needs we want to bring to you at the regular May board meeting? And then anything additional to that, we'll discuss in June and July. And then, of course, uh, hoping to finalize a budget and approve it by the end of August. So that's our timeline and this is, of course, our first budget workshop, but we're glad to answer any questions you have at this time.
Deanne?
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question regarding the employee assistance program. Will that be a staff, uh, individual that would be hired for an office of counseling or will this be an external counselor that would be used?
External, Tony, do you want to unmute and talk about this?
We're employing, put out for, um, RFP for that and it's, most school districts have a program where it is an external company that, um, it would run through the benefits office and it would be like each employee has access to eight free counseling sessions, um, or, or however many that, that they submit. So it is an external company and it's not utilizing our counseling services so that our counselors on campus can counsel kids.
And that's a state requirement?
No, it is not.
Oh, okay. I, I thought that's what I heard a while ago.
I thought I did too. Would, uh, uh, a, a second part to that question. Would there be certain parameters that would fit into this, uh, counseling or is it going to be just anything and everything?
No, I believe there's certain parameters that, that, um, the employee would have to fulfill in order for the counseling to be, to be available to them.
Thank you.
Deanne, there's been no change in the, the state's funding for the, for pre-K, has there?
No, sir. It's still funded at a half-day. Um, they're asking you to take, uh, money from that, uh, early, uh, childhood money that we were given to fulfill that requirement or other local funds. So it's still funded at a half-day, but the requirement is to have full day.
Any idea what that cost us or what the cost for that is?
Carla, can you give a ballpark on that?
Ballpark, about eight million that it cost us. It depends on how many students that we have because it is funded at half-day, but it really just varies each year. I could definitely run numbers and get it back to everybody.
Well, I think it'd be interesting, you know, uh, when things are, when things are great, it's, uh, you might not dig so hard, but you want to know why you're where you are. And, and, you know, I, I think the $5,000 raise, that won't be funded this year, right? I mean, there won't be another $5,000 raise, but they funded, didn't the state fund that raise last year?
So I can answer that. So the requirement was we had to pay 30% of the gain. And out of that 30% of our gain, which was 16 million, we had to pay, the teachers had to get 75% and the rest had to get 25%. It was not a $5,000 raise per teacher. What we had to do was maintain that gain of what it is. The only time we ever have to redo that again is if the basic allotment increases. So as long as the basic allotment stays at the 6160, then we don't have to give that kind of a raise again.
All right. So, so it really is funded then? It's baked in?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Deanne, I have one other question.
Sure.
On page 128, uh, under the support, remove NO2 position for child nutrition. Are we combining something or doing something different there? Page 128, under support, uh, one, two, three, the fourth item.
Yes, that's a Carla department. They are, um, wanting to do a kind of a switch rear. You want to talk that, Carla, for child nutrition?
Yes, we're removing two halftime positions and making one manager position. And the difference was 26,000 to, or that's to remove it. And then the increase was right at 30,000. So it's not a big, uh, increase, but Mary felt that she needed that manager position more than she needed the two halftime positions.
I have a question. Was this a pre-COVID budget, planning budget?
Uh, for the most part, yes. Uh, there have been some needs that have come back, uh, since COVID, uh, but the timeline was such that they were submitting prior to COVID. That's just how the timeline goes. So even though we've had some additional needs come up related to COVID, I'm not sure we totally know what our needs are. Um, when you don't know if kids are going to be allowed to come back fully in the fall, if you don't know if we're going to be dealing with parents not wanting to send their kids back and perhaps having to opt for, uh, distance instruction. I mean, there's many scenarios. We start, stop because there's a resurgence. Uh, we have a task force that's working on all those curriculum needs and as those costs related to that come forward, um, I'll bring those back to you. As we close out this year, I can tell you, we've made purchases related to COVID that would have been spent on other things had it not been, uh, for the kids, of course, having to be in distance learning. Uh, so stocking up at the warehouse on hand sanitizer or on mask or gloves or other PPE equipment or sanitization products for our custodians to use, uh, that kills the COVID virus and of course, uh, is able to treat the campus in a, in a quicker manner to sanitize it. Uh, those are some purchases we've made now with monies that might've been spent on other things had we been in school face-to-face like we had hoped.
Well, and that, that, that's my point exactly is that regardless of what occurs, I'm sure hand sanitizer is going to be a staple. Um, and we have to be prepared for the future, right? So, um, I'm sure that, I'm sure you guys have a plan B. What if something happens? Um, what if there's a resurgence in, in the fall or what have you? Do you have a, a, a fall budget if something were to happen? I, I'm sure that maintenance has supplies that they're going to need that they didn't use in the past. So I'm sure that there's items that have to be in this budget that didn't exist in the past budgets, so that.
Yeah. And there's some cuts that we've made just because of COVID. So there's both. Um, I would say, yes, there's definitely both. Being the generous, um, tablet that we were able to purchase, the technology, all of that is in mind of, you know, do we have to continue this distance learning? Uh, but we also know those are things that we're going to keep. The MiFi's, for example, we may turn off, but we're going to keep, uh, so we don't have to order again. Uh, so it's just a flip of a switch to get those back into the homes and we're using them in summer school as well. Uh, so there's some new realities and we're, we're accounting for those in the budget. Um, the process started before COVID, but a lot of the changes happened after COVID became part of our world.
Right. Thank you. Carla, I have a, a question of, so are we eliminating a position in that, uh, child nutrition?
Yes, ma'am. Two of them, two four-hour positions. So there will be two that goes away.
And we'll have a full-time manager in that position.
Yes, ma'am.
And we're saving $26,000 out of it.
Well, we, the, the two positions that we removed are 26,000 and the manager that we added is 36,000. And all of that is paid for out of the child. is 36,000, and all of that is paid for out of the child nutrition department, out of their funds.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Like I said, we are, this is early, early in the process, so we're going to keep coming back to you. You know, of course, we'll take questions throughout the process, and of course, direction or guidance. I know it's really hard with raises, there was an article in the paper just recently about other districts and what they're planning to do. I think a lot of people are kind of pausing to wait, to see what others are doing. We were, of course, generous with our raise last fall, but nowhere near as generous as perhaps other districts, so that's why we wanted to give options and look at different budgets and what it would mean. I think, you know, Carla, and with our conversations, I like being conservative on the revenue side, I think it puts us in a much better position in the end, so we don't come up as short as maybe we have in the past, and we want to always be conservative in our projections, whether it's COVID or whether it's not. So that's what we're doing here, and we're going to continue to review it, monitor it, be on every Zoom call we're invited to. We've zoomed a lot about budget, whether it's with PASBO or whether it's with other entities regarding information that impacts the bottom line, so we'll continue to do that and continue to bring you that information forward.
Deanne, I have another question.
Sure.
On page 131, item number 698, extended day program, why are we cutting that $150,000?
Karen, do you want to speak to that? I know you're on the Zoom, and I think there's some money that's moved around related to that.
We moved that, Ms. Sullivan, into extended year. Traditionally, over the last three years, we have not spent the full amount in extended day by about 100,000, and we have spent, we've gone over budget on extended year, so that was actually done prior to COVID, that we knew we needed more money in extended year than in extended day, so we just moved the money because of our tradition of what we've been spending.
Well, don't we have a number of those extended day programs under the ACE grant?
Yes, yes, we do, they take care of quite a bit, and then we have extensive extended day, which actually also feeds into pie time, the in-school tutoring. Some teachers, schools use it for hiring retired teachers and different folks to come in and tutor during the day. So it's during the school year tutoring and assistance and intervention and enrichment is what goes up, but we still have been under budget by about $100,000 on extended day, and over budget on extended year, which is the summer school piece.
And then I have one other question, which is, the last item, are we going to discuss that regarding the additional personnel for the reading academy program coordinator?
Yes, ma'am, I was going to have, once y'all take, of course, motions, I was going to have Karen speak to that, and then answer any questions that y'all may have on the next item.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Yes, ma'am, on the next item, after you take motions, we were going to have Karen, Dr. Hickman speak to it, and then answer any questions.
Great, thank you.
I have one more question, Deanne, on the, if we're reducing the ADA to 47, 840, is there anything reflected as far as personnel is concerned for the need to educate that many less kids in this, in these drafts?
The ASCDs...
Or would there be any difference?
Yes, the ASCDs worked with the principals on projected numbers, so there was some loss of positions at campuses, there were, of course, some gains based on particular campus needs and projections, so I don't know if any of the ASCDs want to speak to that specifically, but of course, they looked at what the projections were. I think it's hard, you know, without knowing how it's going to look in this COVID world, that was if everyone came back, and everyone was going in a traditional setting, a face-to-face type setting. So that's what most districts are planning for, I don't know of any districts that are basing their budget off of a different scenario right now, but we're monitoring that. I know I'm participating in a meeting tomorrow with Region Four superintendents related to plans on how to kick off 2020, 2021, and so if it's going to look different projection-wise, then we're going to have to come back to the table, but they did have that in mind. Ms. Harold, do you want to speak to that?
Yes, ma'am, it was based on the snapshot date, which is October the 31st this year, it was October the 31st, and so we based our, all of our campus projections on that.
Just so you know, we always base it on enrollment and use that snapshot date, we never base it on ADA, because those kids, even though they may miss school, they're still enrolled and still having to be monitored by that teacher and worked with at that campus through the administration. So we always base it on enrollment, but it's a valid question.
What year, what was last year's estimate?
Carla, do you want to pull up last year's ADA?
It's 48,681.
Okay, so it's not drastically different?
No.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Deanne, I think that what you're saying and what Carla's saying, which we actually know is...
Who knows?
That's right, who knows? And I think it's going to be a living document all the way through till the end of the year.
You bet.
Yes, sir, most definitely. So we'll be coming back, any additional information that you need related to any area, just let me know, and we'll get that for you, get it to all board members, but we're going to continue to work it from every angle, and like I said, we'll be participating in a lot of Zoom meetings or otherwise scheduled meetings to stay on top of what's out there, what information can help guide us in this process. But thank you very much for being, all of you here today, just to see what work we've been doing, and then of course, any direction you want to give us, we are here and willing to incorporate that as we go forward.
I'm going to wish you luck and pray for you.
Yeah.
Most of the stuff we know today is, the only thing we really know is what happened a couple of months ago.
Yes, sir.
That's where we are.
So true.
End of the tunnel. Okay, next item on the agenda, consideration and possible approval of additional personnel for the 2020, 2021 school year.
So moved. Second.
Wait, Mr. Morgan, say it, Ms. Sullivan, any comments or questions?
So board members, like I said earlier, this is a legislative requirement tied to reading academies, and we had some options about how we go about training our teachers and administrators. The reason we're coming now is because we know we've got to get started, there's training scheduled this summer that is not slowing down, there's been no pause button or breaks put on this initiative, so we want to be in compliance and be prepared, but Dr. Hickman, do you want to talk about the options we looked at and how this saves us money in the long run?
Yes, ma'am, so the way that we have designed this, you can have an outside entity come in and do the training, you can have Region Four come in and do the training, or you can train in your own school district. The, any way that you do it, you would need additional personnel to handle the level of paperwork that the state is requiring, but we have a strong preference and feel like we will get a better job done and have better outcomes if we use our own personnel and we train our own personnel. So our plan is really kind of a three-year rollout in this coming year to train in-house all of our reading coaches, and some of our administrators have been asked to be trained ahead of the teachers. And then year two, once we, there's, by the way, they're still writing the curriculum, and they're just still in the middle of trying to figure out what it's going to look like. So some school districts are training this year, their teachers, but we really want to wait a year and see the curriculum and see that rollout and the adjustments that we think that they'll make along the way, and so we would want to start with our teachers the following year. We want to get our coaches prepared and actually have them acclimated and be a part of that whole process the year before. You have to train all of these folks anyway, but we'd like to give a little, a startup with the coaches and some administrators so that they know what's coming. So then the second year, we would train all pre-K through fourth grade, resource and date teachers, and give the possible option to music and PE and other ancillary staff, but the requirement is actually through third grade, but because we have so much movement between the grade levels at elementary, we want to go ahead and train our fourth grade teachers also. So this coordinator position would get trained, become a trainer of trainers, and they would be, this person would be the person to actually roll out the reading academy this year with our coaches and administrators, and then the following, lead the charge for doing the training for 1,422 staff members. At that point, we will be coming back because you'll have to have additional cohort leaders, is what we're calling them, because the state only allows you to have up to 300 people under each cohort leader, because they have to do all this, anyway, a lot of requirements, grading, et cetera, for the reading academy, so that would be another hire that we'll have to do. And we were crunching numbers this morning, again, with a lot of, you know, details worked into it, and we will save some money, but not lots of money, but we still think that this is the preferred way to save a little bit of money and to have, I think, a better outcome. The third year would just, we'll be continuing every year, having to train all new teachers, even if they get certified at the university to be in the science of reading, they will still have to go through the state reading academy, and the Region Four charges about $400 a person to, if we were to do it through Region Four. And Scott's online too, if he wants to jump in at any moment.
You did a nice job, very proud of you.
And so if we need an individual to have no more than 300 under their guidance, how many more people are we going to need in our district, Karen? Or are we going to be able to utilize some of the individuals that are presently employed?
Yeah, the cohort leaders, we would need four of those with the coordinator taking some of the load, and that works us, they would each have about 284 is what we're calculating right now, you know, that number will shift, I'm sure, but that's 284 a person, and that, the districts that have done some piloting say that that is working way more than a 40-hour week. So no, we don't have anybody who has 40-hour weeks available to take this on. No current staff can add that to their current load.
So we're going, we're looking at a coordinator plus four other individuals that would be trainers, per se?
Yes, so year one, only the coordinator, the following budget year, we would have to add the cohort leaders, is what we're calling them right now.
And there would be four in the next year?
That, the following year would be four, the first year would just be the one.
And then the next year would be what?
So year one would be one, year two would be five, the coordinator plus the four cohort leaders, and then when we go just to the new teachers, we think we'll just do it back with the coordinator, we won't have to have those leaders.
Yeah, I think we should keep it in-house like you have, I think that's great.
I feel very strongly that we're going to have a better product, and it'll be, I just think it's going to be a better outcome for our kids, so yes, I agree.
So when you post the position, it will be for an in-house individual?
It will be, it'll be posted, the person would become in-house, I think we have plenty of people in our district who will apply and who'll be good candidates, but it'll be a general posting to see, you know, the very best reading coordinator person we can find.
Would they know, I guess, and I guess we're talking about hiring for a position in a very finite time period, correct?
The court, yeah, the coordinator would probably be ongoing, Mr. Bailey, because each year we have to train the new teachers.
Right, I mean, the coaches.
Yeah, the four, yes, the cohort leaders would be probably for one year, and they would be stepping out and then stepping back into coaching at the building.
Okay.
I think that's, teachers are a consistent model, an in-house coaching piece, which is critical to the process, and then of course, let's be honest, it saves them that trip to Region Four to receive that training, as well as having the in-house coaches is going to pay off. So we see it as financial savings, but also win on the strength of, strength of the model here in PISD.
And even though this is a requirement of the state, they didn't volunteer to pay a coordinator salary, did they?
Well, again, it goes back to that pot of money, that early childhood money, everything, I think, everything, a lot of things are supposed to come out of that money, so it goes quickly, and Carla will tell you, you don't have anymore, you can't spend what you don't have, so she reminds us of that quite often.
Yeah, they have way overspent, I mean, they have way over designated to that fund, what you can actually pay for with that fund.
Then we need to remind our legislatures of the same thing.
Yes, we've been trying to do that while we were saying thank you for House Bill III and the funding, that there's a lot of long-term financial implications that were not necessarily considered.
And so this one coordinator is going to cover us for this year?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Well, one thing about revenue is, every state's going to suck wind on a lot of revenue that's lost, it's never coming back. We won't see the impact of this for, we will see the impact of this for two to three years down the road.
I agree.
So...
And the oil prices don't help us either, so we've got a double whammy.
Like I say, it's long-term, it's not short-term. Any other questions?
Thanks, Karen.
Thanks, Karen.
You're welcome. Thank you, Scott, he gave me a 30-minute debrief and taught me everything I had to say.
Good for Scott, thank you. That's the last item I have on the agenda, anybody else?
Did we vote? No.
Want to do that, I take it. Hold in favor, sir.
Um...
Falls, no, motion passes, thank you. We have no more meeting business before the board today?
A move, we adjourn. Second.
Well, maybe we adjourn, Ms. Morgan, second, Ms. Sullivan, all in favor, say.
Um...
Hi.
Falls, no, we will adjourn at 1:25 PM, thank you very much, y'all.